June, are you on the call and can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, I'm right here.
Okay, I've had a text from Susan Stocking and I think she was concerned that she might have missed the time to deliver the DAC report. And so I wonder, I'm not sure-
Let me call her and give her the information.
Yeah, please do that.
If I may speak to that, I actually have Ms. Stocking, I see the phone number, June, that you gave me, she, as an attendee, and so I can allow her to talk at that time.
Perfect, perfect, thank you.
You can see that she's on then, Brian?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, I'm making sure that I have all of my colleagues back. And, June, can you just confirm for me, I'm not sure that I can see everybody?
Ms. Wolfsee is here, I just spoke with her. Dr. Jones?
I think Dr. Jones is getting logged on.
She's getting logged in, she's right there.
Okay.
Okay, very good, we are all here.
All right, well then, let's go ahead and begin. Welcome, everyone. This, we will open our meeting of December 9th, 2020, we're very glad you are here. I will ask the secretary to please call the roll.
Ms. Manser?
Here.
Mr. Abarka?
Present.
Ms. Cortez? I see you. Mr. Hogan?
Here.
Dr. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Westerstrom?
Here.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Here.
Thank you.
Wonderful. At this time, it would be in order to receive a motion to approve the agenda for this evening.
A move, oh, second.
It has been moved and seconded, is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, this will be a roll call vote, the secretary will please call the roll.
Ms. Manser?
Yes.
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Westerstrom?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Wonderful. The next item on the agenda is public comment. This evening, we have three individuals who have indicated they wish to address the board this evening. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker and we will just call you in the order that we have you. Is Mr. Frederick Steiner online at this time? Mr. Steiner? All right, if he speaks up in a second, we'll, we'll come get him.
Hello, this is Frederick.
Oh, yes, okay, Mr. Steiner, welcome, it's your turn for public comment and thank you for joining us. And as I think you know, it's a three-minute timeline for your comments.
Yes, all right, good afternoon, school board members, it's a pleasure to talk with you again. Four months ago, in August, I came before you to say that the reopening criteria for Kansas City Public Schools was impossible. The criteria at the time was KCPS would open after two weeks of day-over-day declines in cases. I then explained and showed that there's a high degree of variability in new case numbers and that it was impossible to have two weeks of day-over-day decreases. As you know, KCPS has changed the criteria to being based now on case positivity rates in zip code service. I think we've made progress. Here, the criteria isn't impossible, but it isn't useful either. The goal KCPS is attempting to gauge is the level of risk of transmission at school. That goal is not well-served by positivity rates because the baseline or denominator of positivity rate, the number of tests given, isn't consistent or inclusive. The only thing positivity rates are measuring is the number of people that thought they had COVID, got tested, and were right. This matters little in measuring general community risk. The variability rates in testing can be shown by the data coming from the Kansas City Health Department. On July 12th, in the KCMO metro area, there were 455 COVID tests run. On the very next day, there were 1,928 tests run with a significant impact on case positivity rates. The more tests you do, the lower the positivity rate. Different zip codes also have very different testing levels. From October 12th, 10th, excuse me, zip code 64126 had 1,540 residents tested, yielding a positivity rate of 18%, while zip code 64113 had nearly double that with a positivity rate of 5%. Not only are the raw test numbers different, so are the tests per 100,000 people. In conclusion, please use hospital capacity rates as a general barometer of the community's ability to handle additional possible COVID cases. Optimally, KCPS should do an actual risk calculation on the thing the district is trying to avoid. This is how most organizations that deal with risk make operational decisions. The board owes it to its students to put forth this effort to properly examine school risk rather than blanket closing of schools. I do hope that you examine and change the criteria that you're currently using.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner, we appreciate your remarks. The next individual on our list for public comment is Ivy Lynch Shaw. Ms. Lynch Shaw, are you with us? Okay, I will go to the next individual. The next individual on the list is Hannah Warren. Ms. Warren, are you with us tonight?
Present.
Oh, welcome, thank you for joining us. You are welcome to begin your, your comments and we will give you three minutes, thank you.
Thank you, and good evening, Kansas City Public School Board, it's a pleasure to speak with you tonight. The reason I am calling in is because I have a lot of safety concerns about the children in our community. As you know, all of our kids are virtual at this time. I work as a first responder in the community and so this really hits home for me because as of December 6th, 44 children were killed in homicides this year, which is a record. There are 256 homicides in Kansas City as of December 6th. Those 44 children didn't deserve to die on the streets like that, it's not okay. I am tired of watching children get picked up by police because they are involved in crimes, violent or otherwise, running around the streets, 12, 13 years old, breaking into people's houses because they have nothing else to do. It is a shame that this is allowed to go on and I believe that the poorest and most economically disadvantaged communities are the ones that are going to pay the price for this decision to make virtual school a blanket decision. So please reconsider the criteria, let those who wish to remain home for their safety and continue virtual schooling, let them continue to do so. But for those who are ready to go back, who need that person-in-person support, who need that support structure of having a physical school to go to, please, please consider a hybrid model at a minimum so that these children can survive this next year. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you very much, Ms. Warren, we appreciate you coming this evening. The next item on the agenda is the District Advisory Council Report and we have Ms. Stocking, Susan Stocking, with us from the DAC. But before, before I have her speak, I just, there are a lot of new faces here with us tonight and these are our special guests and we will be recognizing them as part of our program tonight. I am excited to see you all here and we are thrilled. Do not worry, we will not place you at the very end of the agenda tonight, but we just have a few more items of business, so hang tight with us, don't go away and we will be with you soon, we're very glad to see you. So Susan, are you with us tonight?
I am, are you able to hear me?
Absolutely.
Fantastic, okay, well, good evening, Chair Person Manser, Dr. Bell, Dr. Bedell and members of the school board. I wanted to report that the District Advisory Committee has held two general meetings since the beginning of the school year. Our kickoff meeting featured a list of resources for our students and families, including the Urban League of Greater Kansas City, Justice in the Schools, and an introduction to the work that Dr. Woodley and her team are doing to become a trauma-informed district. Since going virtual, we've reformatted the general meetings to showcase information during the first part of the meeting, followed by breakout sessions that allow our attendees to discuss and provide feedback. Camila Alvarez has done a wonderful job of providing Spanish language, excuse me, Spanish language support to DAC, which has opened the door to greater participation from parents and community members. Courtney Adams and Kelly Waichel have both been instrumental in setting us up for success with the new virtual format. The communications team helped us with guided questions about distance in virtual learning and the other breakout room talked about effective communication from the district. Courtney Adams and the communication teams care for the technical parts of the presentation, slides, breakout rooms, and translations and we are very grateful for, for their, their guidance and support. At our November general meeting, we heard from Crystal Everett, the Real World Learning Coordinator, about upcoming trainings available to KCPS families. The meeting featured Dr. Woodley and the work that's being done to create a trauma-informed code of conduct. We learned about ACEs, adverse childhood experiences, and DAC meeting participants even had the opportunity to take the ACEs questionnaire. We also took a look at understanding the role of bias in discipline and the effects of secondary trauma on teachers. In order to create a successful code of conduct, it's critical to collaborate with students, families, staff, and administration in order to maximize culture shift. In our breakout sessions, we took a closer look at subsections of the current code of conduct like expected behaviors in classrooms, dress code, and cellphone and social media. I want to thank Dr. Woodley and her team for helping to facilitate those breakout rooms and collect feedback. It's very exciting to be a part of this collaboration and currently the DAC is participating in the Code of Conduct Committee, the Enrollment Committee, and we're looking forward to working with the Legislative Committee. And that brings us finally tonight to announcing our next general meeting, which is scheduled for Wednesday, January 20th at 6:30 PM and we will be diving into the KCPS legislative agenda and public education legislative advocacy. Board member Wolfsee is going to be featured, but I encourage any of you to join in the meeting and listen in on the breakout room. Thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Stocking, we appreciate you coming. We now turn to the Board of Directors' report and the first item on the agenda is the Treasurers' report. The chair recognizes Treasurer Manny Abarka.
Sorry, obviously you got lost in my mute button. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us tonight. I'm so glad to see so many wonderful faces on here that we don't normally see during our regular business meetings. One second here, does that pull up my own presentation? Or has my notes not loaded? There we go, all right. So starting off, just a reminder that this month, we are looking at the actual revenues and expenditures compared to the budget. We are at 42% through the calendar year at this point. So in previous months, we've been looking at them compared to prior years at the same time. So looking at our slide number two here, the summary of funds. On the top line, we see that each fund started the year with more fund balance than when budgeted. This is largely due to the intentional savings in the latter part of 2019, 2020 year due to COVID. The increase in starting fund balance is important to our current year and future year extra costs related to COVID. Okay, looks like, moving on to slide three for local revenues, looks like we're toggling back here. Should be, local revenues should be where we're at. There we go, perfect. Property taxes lines 51111 and 5112 are behind budget largely due to the timing, of course. You'll pay your property taxes at the end of this month, so please, please be sure to do this on time so that we can make sure and account for those funds. 513 is the Prop C sales tax this time of year and since we are in an accrual-based system, this only reflects three months, so we are on target for budget. Looking at the slide four, for the continued local revenue, the total local revenue is at 3.3% of budget due to the fact that most of the revenues are collected in January and February, after those taxes are paid. Moving on to county and state revenues. Again, most of these occur in the later half of the year, so these will catch up as time continues to pass. Looking at the sixth slide under federal revenues, we are at 55% of the federal revenues, mostly due to increased EDI and title revenues. Lines 5441 and 5451, which are partially reflective of costs at the end of 2019, 2020. Looking at our large pie chart here, you can again see that property taxes from our local revenue is our largest and will continue to be our largest line share of revenues collected for the district. Moving on to the next slide. Thus, our largest expenses of salary and benefits. We're on track for budget at 31% as we make payroll in July and June earnings. Looking at slide nine and 10 here, and we'll just toggle through nine first. Line 6328, contracted substitutes is an example of where we are experiencing current year savings due to not being onsite or in, in normal session right now because of COVID. The total purchase services are only at 16% of budget, which I think is the next, you're on the right side, are at 16% of budget, again impacted because of the COVID scenario. Looking at the next slide, supplies in total are at 50% of budget at this current rate. And then I think there's another, supplies continue. And again, these are modified because of COVID impacts. You can go ahead and toggle. You can see again, this is just showing us how the breakdowns of our expenditures are hashed out and where we're spending our dollars up until this point. Moving on to the next slide. So our investments in cash are reducing as expected while we await property tax revenues. Again, remember, you can something, I guess for the future foresight, as you'll see a large lump sum come in and kind of catch up for our revenues, we will make investments later on in the spring to catch up for the years that we are, for the months that we're not incurring revenues from our tax base. So with that, Madam Chair, I turn it back over to you.
Thank you, are there any questions from my board colleagues about these Treasurers' report? Okay, hearing none, thank you, Mr. Abarka, appreciate that. We'll go on to the next item on the agenda. The next item is on the, on the elections. The Kansas City School Board will have an election on April 6th of 2021. Filing for that election will begin later this month on December 22nd. One of the items that we have to undertake tonight is to adopt a resolution that goes to the Kansas City Election Board. I'm going to read the resolution and then we will take an action to approve it. The notification of our election cycle has been published in the newspaper and will be then formally submitted after we take action this evening to the election board. So the resolution reads, "Resolved that an election be held in the school district of Kansas City, Missouri pursuant to Section 162.492 on April 6th, 2021, between the hours of 6 o'clock AM and 7 PM, for the purpose of electing one director of the board of the school district for Sub District 1 with term expiring in 2025, one director of the board of the school district for Sub District 3 with term expiring in 2025, one director of the board of the school district for Sub District 5 with term expiring 2025, and one director of the board of the school district for at-large with term expiring 2025. Further resolved that all qualified voters residing within the school district within the corporate limits of Kansas City, Missouri, shall each vote at the polling places designated for the precinct in which he or she resides, as such polling places shall be designated by the Kansas City Board of Election Commissioners. Further resolved that pursuant to Section 115.125 and 115.127, the Secretary of the Board of Directors of the school district shall provide notice in writing to the election board as required by Section 115.125. The notice of election is approved by the board in the, in the document attached here too and made a part of this resolution by reference." So that is the resolution. It would be in order to receive a motion to approve that resolution, a motion and a second, please.
A move.
Second.
It has been moved and second, is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, this will be a roll call vote, the secretary will call the roll.
Ms. Manser?
Yes.
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan, your video must be on for your vote to count, thank you. Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hogan.
Yep, yes.
Mr. Westerstrom?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, there's a majority in favor and the resolution is adopted. For those individuals of the community who are joining us this evening or who may watch this later, please know that there is information on the Kansas City Public Schools website on the upcoming election, information about filing qualifications and other details for individuals who are interested in knowing more. So simply go to kcpublixschools.org, go to the Board of Directors section and then you will see a board election page. And we welcome any questions or inquiries regarding that. At this time, I'll turn to ad hoc committee reports. Do any of the ad hoc committees wish to report to the board this evening? And I'm waiting to hear if anyone-
I do, our government relations would like to.
Finance as well.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Wolfsee.
Just real quick, I wanted to give a quick update that we have kicked off our 2021 legislative season, if you will, when we hosted our legislative preview last Friday. And I wanted to make sure that the public, those of the public that are interested in staying abreast of all of our legislative priorities and the progress that we're making towards those, both at the state level and local level. One of the best ways to do that is to send an email to legislativealerts@kcpublixschools.org. What we kicked off last year and we will add to this year is we, we will not flood your email box. We try to keep it to a what we need to know when, we need to know it basis. It's a legislative newsletter and then we'd like to add action alerts to that this year. So the information we're asking, if you're interested in signing up, is your name, your organization, your role. The email that you'll send it from is the one that we'll probably set you up with unless you tell us otherwise. And a number that you would like to receive text alerts, if that's something you'd like to receive as well. So that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cortez?
Yes, I just wanted to update the public on the initial work of the Finance Committee. The committee was formed recently and approved by the board. We will be meeting in January to hear from the administration with regard to the budget, the budget preparation timeline and a series of policy monitoring components to line things up for the rest of this academic year. So we're off and running.
Thank you, we're excited to have this new committee playing an important role in the financial health of the district. Are there any additional reports this evening? Hearing none. Dr. Bedell, I'm going to turn it over to you for the superintendent's report, which we're excited about.
All right, Madam Chair, I think we're ready to go. We have several items and I was in here right now taking my notes, let me just pull this back up. We have several items under the superintendent's report and I want to start off by welcoming all of our guests who are here tonight, those of you who will be recognized and then those of you who actually called in to speak and to provide some feedback to the school district. It's all appreciated as we continue to navigate through this pandemic. And so as I think about where we are right now, there's several items that we have under the superintendent's report. First item is going to be our recognitions of our scholar superstars, terrific teammates, outstanding administrator, community champions. And that will all be done by our Chief Communication Marketing Officer, Kelly Waichel. And then we will have our donation from Pivot International and our donation from Burns and McDonald, Burns and McConnell, I'm sorry. That will take place with Nicole Collier-White from our Education Foundation. And then we will go into our opening of schools update. And I know that while we have A and B, I'm going to open up and go through the first several slides and then we'll move it over and give you a quick testing update. And then we will have Child Nutrition Services to provide you an update on the services we're providing. And then at that point, we will move into our Policy Monitoring Report 1.3 on student social, emotional health and wellbeing. So to get started, I will pass it over to Ms. Kelly Waichel.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for joining us, guests, thank you for being here. This is your turn, we get to honor and recognize you for your contributions to KCPS. And so Brian, if you'll move the slide presentation forward, we're going to start with our scholar superstars. So I'm going to call your name and then you can say hello to us real quick. And first, we have Serena, Serena Baker-Brown. Serena, can you say hello and wave to us real quick, so you can see on the screen? There you are, hello. And I'm going to read a little bit about you. Serena Baker-Brown is a third grader at Trail Woods Elementary School. Serena is very hardworking, her teachers value her leadership and appreciate her effort to never give up even when the content is tough. She can be counted on to lead discussions with classmates by modeling her thinking and debating and justifying answers. Her teacher says, "I feel so lucky to have Serena in class." Serena, congratulations. Yay. Anything you want to say, Ms. Serena?
I like being at Trail Woods.
We are so glad you're at Trail Woods, thanks for joining us. And Brian, we have one more slide, we have two slides per student today so we can see other pictures as you scroll through those. But thank you, Serena, congratulations, we'll be mailing your certificate to you here in the next week to come to your house, okay? We'll be mailing your certificate to you here in the next week to come to your house, okay? Elizabeth Cushing, Elizabeth, can you say hello next?
Hi.
Hi, Elizabeth. Elizabeth is a third grader at Benjamin Bannaker Elementary School. Elizabeth is a bright young woman with an even brighter future ahead of her. Elizabeth develops enormously and is putting her academic focus into drive. With the right structure, parent and staff support, Elizabeth has become a scholar superstar. She engages in classwork and is inquisitive about the content. She has such a bright personality that she is often featured in KCPS videos. This is true. We at Bannaker are so proud of the transformation that Elizabeth has shown within the last year and we are so lucky to have her. Ms. Elizabeth, anything that you want to say?
Thank you.
No, thank you. Congratulations. And we love your glasses on your picture there. You look great. Right there. Nice shape. All right, next Angie Corales. Angie, are you on the call to say hello? Then I saw her earlier. Ms. Angie, are you on the call? Say hello. Okay, well, we'll get started and then maybe she'll join us here in a little bit. Angie is a kindergartner at Trail Woods Elementary School. Angie has taken distance learning very seriously and absolutely rocked it. She is dedicated to attending every single class meeting and her passions for learning is evident in every enthusiastic response she gives. Her teachers have watched her blossom from a shy, quiet kid to a bold and determined student who is competent in her ability to practice and master anything that comes her way. I've been stunned by the independence and persistence she has shown over the last several weeks. The best part is that she is not only growing academically, but she's also flourishing socially, setting a great example for the other shy kids as she greets her friends by name every morning on our video calls. Congratulations, Angie. All right, Michelle Hayes. Michelle, are you on the call?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Michelle. I know you're taking a break from work tonight. Thank you for being here. Where do you work?
McDonald's.
Okay, well, thanks for taking a quick break and joining us. We appreciate you being here. Michelle Hayes is a sophomore at Central High School. Michelle was nominated for this award by her algebra teacher because of her focus and persistence in class. In a rigorous Algebra I class, Michelle earned an A and was proficient on the state end of course exam. Algebra doesn't always come easy to her, but she works at it until she masters each concept that is taught. When she doesn't understand, she immediately asks for help. She voluntarily unmutes and responds to questions posed in the Google Meet classroom sessions. Michelle is fantastic and we're so glad to have her. Congratulations, Michelle.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And thanks for joining us from work today.
I know.
Aiden, are you on the call? Do we see Aiden? Okay. All right, Aiden is a fourth grader in the Kansas City Virtual Academy. Ms. Duval, you might know Aiden. Aiden is always focused on making progress in his Kansas City Virtual Academy class. He constantly reaches out to see if there's anything he could do better. He has overcome challenges and never missed a beat. He's very encouraging with his classmates. During one of our class meetings, another student was given recognition for something and Aiden congratulated him. Aiden is always positive in every aspect of his life. Congratulations, Aiden.
Thank you.
Oh, there you are. Hi. Anything you want to say, sir?
Um, thank you and it's been fun.
Why, Aiden? Good job.
Thank you.
All right, Jan, I saw Jan on the call earlier with his mom, I think. Jan, are you here to say hello?
Yes, I'm here.
Hello, sir. How are you?
Very good.
Good. All right. Well, Jan is a sixth grader at Carver Dual Language Academy Elementary. Jan's positive attitude is contagious. He brings a smile to any group he joins, is an extremely kind and is helpful to others. Not only is he kind, but he is a hard worker. He never has late or missing assignments and always reaches out if he has a question or needs clarification. Jan is a ray of sunshine. This year would not be the same without him. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
You're welcome. Who do you have as guests with you tonight?
My mother and my father is watching on the back.
Oh, hello, father in the background. All right. Well, congratulations to our scholar superstars. We recognize and honor every nomination that we got this month because we had such great candidates and great scholars. So congratulations to you again, scholars. We'll be mailing your certificate to you and recognizing you through the mail. Thank you for joining us. We're super proud of you.
Yes, thank you.
Yay.
All right, and next are our terrific teammates. These can be teachers, these can be school clinicians. It can be certified and classified staff who support our students every day. And so for our first terrific teammate, we have Ms. Kristen Dua. Kristen, I think, are you on the call?
Yes, I'm here. Hi.
Hello, how are you, Kristen?
I'm doing great tonight, thanks.
Good to see you. All right, Kristen was nominated. She's a trauma sensitive school clinician at Success Academy at Anderson. Ms. Dua takes such good care of all the Success Academy students, Success Academy Anderson students. She helps them with things like getting logged into class, issues with their peers and families, or finding food for their families. Ms. Dua is also innovative. She started a newsletter called Community Cares and Shares. She also started a series of professional development events titled Resilient School Series. It focuses on trauma and how to help students and teachers have wraparound support for those who have gone through trauma or who exposed secondhand. Ms. Dua takes care of her Anderson teammates too, by the way. Many staff members call her if they need help with school or home issues. She is like a warm hug. Ms. Dua's signature is that she tries, that she tries to do every day. Be the reason someone feels seen, heard, and respected today. Congratulations, Ms. Dua.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything you want to say, Ms. Dua?
I'd just say it really is a team approach and I love my team at Anderson and all the clinicians and everyone at KCPS just working to make a difference. So thank you all.
Thank you. And Mr. We have a certificate and a token for you as well that we will get to you within the next week. All right, Tina Duval. I saw Ms. Duval on the call. Can you say hello, Ms. Duval?
Hello.
Oh, so Ms. Tina Duval teaches fourth grade for the Kansas City Virtual Academy. So you did know Aiden, huh?
I did. He's in Ms. Murphy's class.
Okay, good. Awesome. Well, Ms. Duval is always willing to share anything and she works very hard to make sure her students are successful. She also tries to make it fun for her students to learn new skills. For instance, she taught her students how to create virtual pets, which gives them practice at copying and pasting, drag and drop, and resizing images. She's always willing to hop on a tees me to help her teammates with the problem. Ms. Duval is amazing. Congratulations, Ms. Duval.
Thank you so much. I am so honored. And this makes me like tear up because I am so humbled every day by the wonderful people that I work with at KCPS. And I want to thank you guys for putting in place this system that recognizes hard work for every, you know, not only teachers, but students and everybody. It's just amazing and I am so grateful. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations. And Bethany, is it Pegel or Poggle? I saw you on the call earlier, Bethany. Bethany, you might be muted.
Oh, can't hear her somehow.
Okay, well, we'll read a little bit about Ms. Pegel. Ms. Pegel teaches third grade at Primitivo Garcia Elementary School. This is Ms. Pegel's first year in the district and second year teaching overall. However, the level of support she has shown her students is unprecedented. Ms. Pegel has done home business with all of her students where she has given them supplies, snacks, and more from her own wallet. She has mailed student prizes to keep their morale up and she has kept in constant communication with her families. The level of dedication Ms. Pegel has shown her students at such an early point in her career has been truly inspiring. And one thing to note about Ms. Pegel too is we posted or retweeted one of her Twitter posts earlier in the year where she actually went to one of her students' baseball games. Oh, you can see it right there. And she went to be a fan for one of her students' baseball games. So congratulations, Ms. Pegel. We're very proud of you. And she might have logged off if you get one more chance to say hello, Ms. Pegel. Okay, all right. Well, that concludes our terrific teammates. And next we have our outstanding administrators. And we are going to start with Ms. Leah Starr. Leah, I know, or Ms. Starr, I know you're on the call. Can you say hello?
I am. Hi.
Hello, Ms. Starr. Welcome. Ms. Starr is the principal at Trail Woods Elementary School. According to multiple nominations, Ms. Starr always makes her students her top priority. She constantly makes home visits to students, consistently reaches out for community resources to make our students' home lives better, and fosters a community feeling that the entire school community are all in this together. She leads the philosophy that no matter what, we will always do what is best for our students. "She tries very hard to make the students feel like they are loved, supported, and celebrated for their effort and their hard work," one person wrote in the nomination. "She never makes a decision without valuing the opinions and concerns of those involved. The school's attendance rate demonstrates how much the students feel valued, valued, and want to be at Trail Woods. They can feel how much they are cared about, they trust the staff, and they feel safe at school." Not only does she care about making Trail Woods a better community, she also works hard to make all of KCPS the best it can be, serving on equity teams and encouraging us to have tough conversations about what is and isn't serving our kids. Congratulations, Ms. Starr.
Congratulations.
Thank you. It's, um, thank you for this recognition. I'm really proud to be a member of KCPS as well as lead an amazing group of staff and students. And Trail Woods is my home and I love it. And thank you for this honor. It means a lot.
Congratulations, Ms. Starr. It's great to see you. And Andrew Murphy. Mr. Murphy, are you on the call?
I am. Thank you.
Well, hello, Mr. Murphy. Mr. Murphy is the vice principal at Carver Dual, Carver Dual Language Elementary. This is Mr. Murphy's first year as a vice principal and he's already proving to be among the best school leaders in KCPS. We are very proud of the fact that he is a product of our own Grow Your Own School Leadership Initiative, having served distinction for several years as a teacher at Carver Dual Language. He's a wonderful administrator. It is truly an honor to work with him. Mr. Murphy goes above and beyond to help everyone in the Carver Dual Language community. He provides students with materials and assistance they need to be successful learners. He's the teacher in any way possible. He helps families by connecting them to helpful programs and resources. He does all this with a positive, caring, and loving heart. He never forgets what being in the classroom means. Always positive, always helping. Congratulations, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you very much. It's a big honor. Thank you.
Congratulations, sir.
Hey, great to see you. All right, well, that concludes our super scholar superstars, our terrific teammates, and our administrative portion. And we have one more community champion for us this evening. So I'm going to quickly introduce our community champion and then we have a video showcase along with our champions joining us today to say a few words. So we're just going to quickly introduce our community champion, Friendship Baptist Church. Pastor James Allen, Alan Terrence, are you on the call already?
Yes, I am. Yes, I am.
Hello, sir. Do a quick introduction and then we'll let you say a few words with your video. We are so thrilled to be able to recognize the terrific work Friendship Baptist Church has done at Melcher Elementary over the years. From tutoring, mentoring, and providing uniforms and books, to enhancing the parent space at Melcher and even creating a new adoptive staff program aimed at making sure our teachers feel encouraged and appreciated year round. Their effort and commitment to our students does not go unnoticed and they are the epitome of a KCPS community champion. All right, roll that video.
I am privileged to be a part of our adopter's school ministry here at the Friendship Baptist Church. For over 15 years, volunteers of this congregation have given of their time and their treasure to work with faculty, staff, and students at Melcher Elementary School. It has been a rewarding experience. Serving makes a difference. And at Friendship Baptist Church, we want to make a difference in our community. And we want to make a difference in the lives of our children. So thank you, Melcher Elementary School. Thank you, Kansas City Public School System. Thank you, Dr. Long, and all of the volunteers at the Friendship Baptist Church for the privilege, the opportunity to collaborate, to partner, to make Kansas City a better place and to educate future generations. We're excited about 15 years of service and we look forward to another 15 years of service. Thank you again.
We have had a wonderful partnership with Melcher. We are extremely blessed to have a wonderful group of volunteers. Some of our volunteers are Melcher alums. Our volunteers just pitch in and make things happen. You're probably wondering why I support Melcher Elementary School. Melcher's a school in our church community with needs and we should embrace opportunities like Melcher in our communities. And I would challenge others to become knowledgeable about schools and their communities because it is up to us to help our schools become successful. We can do it together, one school at a time.
If anyone wants to ask us what it does mean to be a volunteer, we would say that you would, it means for us to be committed. It means for us to be patient and it means for us to not let those students down. Be on time and be present.
Being a volunteer gives you the opportunity to be an encourager, to go out, to listen, and to encourage the children. I know for myself, I'm a product of the Kansas City Public School System and dealing with the third through sixth grade boys, it just reminds me of myself and then some of the things that I went through as an elementary school student. I truly appreciate the blessing that both Deborah and I are receiving by being able to volunteer at George Melcher Elementary School. We get more out of it than we give, no matter how much time we give.
I volunteered at Melcher for at least five years now as a tutor and as a mentor. I'm also proud to say that I am a product of the Kansas City, Missouri Public Schools. I graduated from Lincoln Middle and Lincoln High School and I attended Melcher for most of my K through 6 education. So I'm really excited to be back working in the school that I attended.
I have a great time helping them to learn, showing them things that are new. We have a gift in the field of education and it is very important that we give that back to the kids. Teach them how to think, teach them how to dream, how to look, and not just to settle for what's in front of them. I say to the school district, "Thank you for allowing me to give my gift to the children."
I'm Lakeisha Paul and I'm the principal at Melcher Elementary. I want to congratulate Pastor Terrence and the Friendship Baptist Church for being recognized as one of our community champions. There is no other group that I can think of that is more deserving of this honor. Thank you to Dr. Long and the Adopt a School Ministry for always being there to help us make Melcher a better place. Congratulations again. Thank you for your support and I look forward to working with you all for many years to come. Again, congratulations to Friendship Baptist Church.
Woo. Congratulations Reverend, which I'd say a few words to introduce the guests you have with you this evening.
Well, I simply wanted to say it's an honor for our congregation to be recognized as a community champion and we are motivated to continue volunteering and partnering with Melcher Elementary School, the Kansas City Public School System, and other community partners. But it's really a tribute to the volunteers, the people who give of themselves and their time and they come out every week, multiple days during the week, to work wherever they can. And I really want to salute Dr. Mary Long for her leadership of our adopter's school ministry. So we are honored and we appreciate the recognition of hard work and sacrifice by those volunteers. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So before we move over to Nicole Collier-White to go over the two donations, I do want to thank Reverend Terrence for their support. I've had an opportunity to see it in person and Dr. Long. I remember when I first started, kind of took me by my hand and, you know, I came over to the church and had an opportunity to meet many of the members that have been supporting Melcher. And what I'm most certainly hoping will happen here is as the district continues to make the progress we're making to show your contributions, we want to be able to come back and give you all a thorough update on, on our progress across the entire spectrum because the work you're doing at the foundational level to help our kids is paying off. because the work you're doing at the foundational level to help our kids is paying off as they matriculate through our school system. And I think that's so much that you all can be proud of, that what you're doing is definitely paying huge dividends. So I want to thank you all personally, and I want to thank every single one of our students, faculty, and staff members who are all recognized. And now I think we're ready to move forward, Madam Chair, with recognizing two of our partners that have donated to help us as it pertains to COVID-19-related needs.
Wonderful.
All right, so Nicole Collier-White, I will pass it over to you. She's our director, executive director over our education foundation.
Thank you, Dr. Bedell, and thank you for this time to really honor and showcase two of our dynamic donors. As many of you know, school districts have been hit really hard this year, and not just with additional costs, but with thinking through what's going to make our school system and our buildings safer for students to return. And what's been really great is we've had amazing community response from those who have recognized the struggles that we have and have decided, you know what, we're going to step up to the plate. And so tonight, I'm going to recognize two organizations that have really provided their time, attention, and most importantly, their resources to Kansas City Public Schools to make sure that when we reopen in the spring, we can do it in the most safe way physically possible for our students. So at this time, I would like to recognize Mark Donalik from the CEO and President of Pivot International. And I believe I saw him on the screen.
Hello.
Hello.
Oh, yeah. Hello.
Hi. So Pivot International, a Lenexa, Kansas-based global leader in product design development and manufacturing, has partnered with Kansas City Public Schools to enhance maximal protection for students and staff with a gift of over 7,000 safety shields. Designed by Pivot International, the Pivot Shield is made in the USA and manufactured in Pivot's FDA-registered facility. Crafted of clear acrylic plexiglass and two rugged-sized aluminum legs, the safety shields are transparent barriers that reduce the risk of airborne transmission. Easy to set up and easy to clean, they can be used between students' and teachers' desks, and school libraries, lobbies, entryways, administrative offices, security stations, or really anywhere we need additional protection. The 7,000-unit gift by Pivot International represents an estimated $2 million investment in Kansas City Public Schools. First created early in the pandemic for helping businesses and other organizations, they're safely resuming operations, and they're gifting Kansas City Public Schools with over 7,000 shields. And I know Lizelle has actually taken a good chunk of those, already began installing them inside of our schools. And so tonight, we truly want to thank Pivot International for thinking outside the box, understanding the needs of our schools, and that we don't want to be virtual forever. We want our kids back in our buildings, and the safest way to do that is to provide these protections. So at this moment in time, I want to say thank you to Pivot, and if Mark wants to say anything, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you. It was our pleasure. I was pleased that we were in position to help out. We believe strongly in giving back and investing in our community in which we reside. And education is very important to the core company, and obviously, secondary education is essential, and that's where it all starts. So I think schools need to try and work as best they can to reopen so the kids can have the best environment possible. So we just, perhaps, we're in position to do what we could.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. I know you have a few of your colleagues on this call as well, so please extend our gratitude to your entire company for their sacrifice and dedication, and really partnering with the district to make this happen. Thank you guys so much.
It's our pleasure.
Thank you so much. Incredible gift.
And time.
Happy to do it.
Thank you. And at this time, I would also like to recognize Michael Brown, president of Burns &amp; McDonald. I think I saw you on as well.
I am. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Doing well, doing well. It's great to have the opportunity to talk to you guys this evening. And tell you what, Burns &amp; Mac's been in Kansas City for almost 123 years, and we've always been focused on our community and being a fabric of that. And I will tell you, the opportunity just to listen to Dr. Bedell and the school board and your teachers and students, it's truly inspiring. So thank you for the opportunity just to sit in tonight and listen to some of the special stories. That's truly amazing. But we're part of the community. We're pleased, and it's our privilege to help out with your mission. So whatever we can do, especially in these trying times, we're here, Kansas City is our home, and we'll always continue to be so. So thank you so much. We appreciate everything you're doing. It's hard times, and we appreciate everything and all the inspiring things that you're doing. And to the extent we can help out the public school system, and number one, we're about education and STEM and our students. And I just appreciate everything you're doing. So thank you. Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Michael. And let me do a little bit of bragging on you now that you've said your wonderful remarks. Burns &amp; McDonald, a family of companies with an unmatched team of 7,600 engineers, construction professionals, architects, technologists, and scientists, is donating between $20,000 and $30,000 to Kansas City Public Schools to ensure that our student athletes have COVID-19 tests. Thanks to Burns &amp; Mac, over 600 student athletes will be the first group to be tested because they participate in activities where social distancing and other safety measures are not always possible in practice or games. This testing will ensure that our games are on time, they actually happen, and our students don't have to worry about doing contact tracing or issues when they go back at home. When more students return to campus for in-person instruction, KCPS school officials are always striving to provide resources to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. And this pilot program will be an effective strategy to protect the health and safety of our students, our staff, coaches, and beyond. So thank you so much for your generous gift to make sure that we can test our athletes, get them back in the field, back on the courts, and they can play. It's tough being at home all day. Trust me, I have a East High School wrestler that I would really love to get out of the house four to five times a week. We want to get these kids tested and get them definitely back playing sports. So thank you so much again to Burns &amp; Mac for making this happen.
It's our privilege. Thank you very much for all you're doing.
Thank you.
It means the world to us, for all of our partners, and the two that we're recognizing tonight. I really appreciate both of you, and you know, listen, schools can't do it alone. It's a big part of our strategic plan, and I feel like having the business sector to truly step up and help us in times of need like this, I really believe that it has made a significant difference in the school district trying to navigate this uncharted territory.
Dr. Bedell, I want to echo that for a moment. We are incredibly gratified for Pivot International and Burns &amp; McDonald. It's amazing how you all just came forward. You are truly a gift to us. And we are so grateful for this generous support. We often don't, you know, think about, well, how do we go find you? But when you just come out and generously give, see a need, an offer, it's a very powerful action, and it is going to make an enormous difference for our district. So to both of your companies and the people that you work with and the teams that are part of you, thank you so much to both of you. We are very appreciative.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, as treasurer, thank you, thank you, thank you for your generous financial donations and long-term commitment. I know at least Burns &amp; McDonald has done a tremendous job in collaborations with KCPS for many years, and I know Mike Talboy has been an incredible asset and community partner. So just thank you both again, as we struggle to find as many resources as we can to respond to COVID. These are pivotal donations. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
You're quite welcome, and I'll let Mike know that he got a shout-out tonight, for sure.
It's our pleasure as well. Thank you.
Thank you both. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Chair, I think that concludes that section of the superintendent's report. The next section is to go over and just give the board and the community an update on, you know, where we are as far as opening up schools is concerned. And I think, whoever controlling, I'll just tell you to move forward on each slide. But I want to just go back and revisit and make sure that our community understands where we are as a school district right now. And if you can go to the next slide, go to the next one. Thank you. So this is our current data dashboard, and we had an opportunity to listen to one of our speakers earlier, Mr. Steiner, who is implying that we take a different look at, you know, what type of data should we consider in being able to make the most informed decision. And I want to say to Mr. Steiner, I'm willing to talk to him along with some of my teammates to listen to what are some other ways that we can look at data. And I think it's important that we do try to consider what's out there, because yesterday, I had an opportunity to listen to the KC Chamber Area Chief Medical Officer's business community update, and these are all of the chiefs of each of our respective hospitals here. And one of the things that they talked about, and I took a picture of it, was the hospitalization rate and their concerns that they're having right now with the capacity. Bed capacity is becoming a significant concern. And I know that many of our other school districts have gone off, and they've tried to bring kids back. Think you've heard Raytown has made a decision that they're going to have to send back their elementary kids and go back into virtual. The issue we already know isn't about the students, it's about the transmission rates amongst adults. And every time that you have to conduct contact tracing, it really impacts our ability to be able to run our operations. So as you can, you think about a number of school districts that have had to pivot and go back into virtual. It wasn't about the kids, it was about the adults, the number of adults that were either being confirmed positive, and then who they had been in contact with, and then the contact tracing is crippling school districts all around the country. And nobody's exempt from that here in this area. And so I am 100% interested and open to having dialogue with folks that are experts that can, you know, continue to help us make the most informed decision. I do want these kids back in the school. I have two personally that need to be back in the school, and I know they want to be back in school. But if I'm not able to run our operations, is this going to create a scenario where we're finding ourselves going back into virtual? And that's exactly what happened. We started back on November 9th with our high-minute students. And we'll go over a slide that shows the data around what it ultimately resulted in us having to go back into virtual after only being in less than three weeks. And this has happened in Boston Public Schools. They came back. Within three days, they had to shut the whole school district back down. This has happened in New York City, so it's not something that's just concentrated here in the Kansas City region. But as you can see, we have our data board, and we tell you, anybody can go to our website. You can look at the numbers, you can look at the number of residents who tested positive for active COVID-19 infection within a two-week period. Scroll over it, it gives you the data. We know that we have been spiking as a whole, not only here inside of the Kansas City region or boundaries, but nationally. We're still considered in a red zone when we look at the positivity trends within the KCPS zip codes. But I do think as we get more and more information from experts, it's an opportunity for us to look at what is the appropriate data that we should be following to make the most informed decision and to make these recommendations to our board. So I am open to having those conversations, and I'll definitely continue to work with Mark and all of the medical experts here. But I will also, I have no problem reaching out to Mr. Steiner, because I felt that there were some things you said that I actually think we need to really consider. And then we have our third chart, which gives you the positivity rate by zip code. And as you can see, in some of our areas, based on who has been tested, and when you look at the denominator of those who have been tested, we're hovering, in many cases, the numbers are, you know, 20 to over 40% in some of our areas. And I think that's the reason why we're struggling right now with even our food services, which you all will get an update on. We're not able to even run our food service operation at scale because of the number of cases that are taking place with adults, and then the number of people that are having to go into quarantine. Next slide. So this is again our gating criteria. This is on our website. We always go back to this framework that will tell you what would trigger, when the school district would move from one level to another. And once again, we are open to dialogue to make sure that we are utilizing the proper data to make the best decisions to try to get our schools back up and running. Next slide. So this is part of our data, and this is real data. This is what happened once we brought our kids back into our high-minute classrooms for our special education services. So when we think about what happened last week, Monday, November 30th, we had 22 absences. Tuesday, December 1st, we had 24. Wednesday, December 2nd, we had 23. And what result, the issue was that we just, we're not able to run our programs, right? We were forced to have to utilize paraprofessionals to try to do a certified teacher's job because our certified teachers are out on quarantine. You can't continue to run an organization in this manner and then be able to appropriately provide the educational services to our kids. And so it did result in us being in a scenario where we were struggling to get subs. And as you all know, the district was even proactive. We hired a permanent sub for each of our schools, where we paid them a little bit more money so that when we were able to bring back kids, we would be able to try to sustain any of our losses with people that have to go on quarantine. But when you're having to shut down multiple classes or even schools, and we've only been back in three weeks, we feel like this is more detrimental to our students than it is helping them, and it's definitely more detrimental to the adults. We found ourselves in a scenario where we had a resignation of a paraprofessional, we had a resignation of a certified teacher, and we had another one, another pair that we didn't think was going to come back after experiencing a death to an immediate relative. This is serious. And so I think if we don't have staff, we can't educate. And so we have to do everything in our power to make sure that we're protecting our human capital while also doing what we need to do to educate our kids. And the truth is, data is showing us that, you know, the significant learning loss that we were anticipating isn't as significant as we thought, and that's not just with this district, it's with districts across the country. And so we think that the platform that we have is helping us, but we know there's nothing that can replace in-person instruction, and that's our goal. Next slide. So our timeline consideration is still the same. We are continuing to explore our learning center model, and we shared that with our board of directors last time we met. We have concerns about being able to do that, because once again, it's around the adults that you bring in and being able to keep these schools open. And we know that we're getting ready to experience the Thanksgiving numbers that are starting to come out. We're going to experience it again after we get back from the holiday break. And so we, you know, right now, it's just a lot of uncertainty. We still have goals of wanting to be able to phase in at the start of the second semester, which is February 1st. And then we are currently working with our community around the model choice for the second semester. Some of our families will want to keep their kids in our virtual academy. Some may say, "I want to go back and I want to do distant learning, because I want my kids to be able to go back to school when school opens up." So that's out. Those decisions are due back to us on December 18th, because there are personnel implications with that that we have to make. But the other piece that I wanted to share with our board and the community is our early childhood centers are still open. We have not had many incidents there. I actually visited Richardson this morning, had a conversation with the principal. I'm having conversations with our team about the possibility of looking at opening up more sections. If it's working there, and they have a prescriptive model that has worked working with the younger kids, I think that's an opportunity for us to look at trying to get a few more sections back in person. And I think we can do it successfully, because I think it's a matter of having teachers that want to be back there, that are going to make the discipline, operate with a level of discipline to make sure that they're not putting themselves in position where they have to go on quarantine. And I think we have a really good system at that level that has worked extremely well with the younger kids. And so we think as a district, that's an area that we're going to look to possibly expand. So we are in conversation right now with our personnel here, our directors that are over early childhood, and we think that that's a strong possibility that we can possibly look at adding a couple more sections to each of those sites. And so we'll keep you posted as we continue to have that dialogue as a team. Next slide. So here's where we are now. As you know, we were thankful for our partners that helped us out with the PPE. Our partners that, that had helped us out with the PPE supplies and then Burns and McDonald. Um helping us to be able to, to offer a level of testing. We've also worked with Mark, um uh, uh, many of our. Other health providers here to provide a no-cost COVID-19 nasal swab PCR testing. To our staff, students and families. And we have multiple locations where this is taking place right now. So it is indeed a community effort. And I want our community to know. When we decided to bring back our high-minute students, we tested 49 of our staff members. 49 of them came back negative. That didn't stop them from being in a scenario where they contracted the virus later. And it didn't stop them from being in contact with people who were confirmed positive. It still resulted in us having to put those people in quarantine for those 14 days. And so, you know, we can do all of this testing. It doesn't stop it if there are not stronger mitigation efforts within our community to stop the community widespread. It's that simple. There's no, no easier way to say that. And I know with Dr. Jones being on, working with the Health Department, I believe she would agree with that. Community mitigation efforts are going to be the only way. That we're going to be able to get our kids back into school. It's that simple. So we need help. And I think um outside of our business sector stepping up. We gotta have some discipline within our community if people want kids back in school. So um Lauren, I wanted to see if you were prepared to um. Provide an update uh around our testing and where we are with the uh. The, the samples that we've received from the state and then the partnerships we have here. Um working with our, with the, with the Mark group here.
Um yes, um I wanted to, you touched on a little bit of it. But our community PCR testing is being done by the three federally qualified health centers. KC Care, Swope and Sam Rogers in collaboration with the Kansas City um Health Department and Mark. They are utilizing Carver on Thursdays, Northeast High on Tuesdays. And Central High on Mondays. And this right now is scheduled through the first week in January. The tests are open to the community and you can make appointments by calling 311. Um KC employees, families in the community, this is all open too. They do approx, they can do 100 to 150 tests in the four hours that they're open. And right now they are averaging since November 23rd approximately 71 tests. Um per site per day. I noticed that it is increasing, I think as the um. The uh flyers have gone out and the publication of this, and I noticed those numbers are going up. The uh CRL testing, we received those yesterday for sports. And we hope to have that started next week. Working with um athletics right now to get that scheduled. So we're hoping for Monday or Tuesday next week. The uh state testing, there is one supply that we did not get. With those tests, so we cannot complete those yet. We are hoping that those will be in very shortly. Um probably not before break, but by January, we should be able to do those tests. And we will start with staff members and probably head start.
All right.
Questions?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I see Mr. Barka, it looks like he has a question.
Right, Mr. Barka, go ahead.
Uh yeah, first off, uh tremendous job here. These are amazing. Um I went and scheduled a test. Um just out of an abundance of caution uh for Tuesday. Um and I can attest for those from the community who are still listening. Uh this is a, a very easy process for those who are familiar with. Some of the other processes within the community where you're asked a bunch of questions. This, this is not that. Uh this is, if you have a feeling that you have been exposed or that you um potentially um. Have um the, the virus itself, please, please, please sign up for this. Um show up at our schools. Um it was very easy. I was in and out in less than 10 minutes. Um so tremendous job everyone um for this. A couple of questions about um the flyer itself. Have we done any work on making this uh multiple language? And spreading, spreading our um, our same flyer in different languages?
Yep, currently in process, Mr. Barker. We just kind of finished this flyer earlier in the week, so yes, on it.
Uh perfect on that end. For the state component of whatever we're missing from the state, have we done any advocacy? Uh whether through our lobbyists or just publicly requesting it. Uh when, in, in regards to that, because right now the state's doing a great job patting themselves on the back and. I think this is a great opportunity for them to show us that they're actually doing stuff.
Um. I don't know, no, I don't know anything about that. So I'm sorry. We are, I, I, it's just a matter of supplies are a little on backorder right now. Um and that, and we really expect it in any minute.
Well, we will continue to push them on it and I'll, you know, I'll be sure as I'm, I'm having my conversations with the Commissioner. Um, you know, to, to do what we can to try to push it. I don't know what's to hold up, honestly.
Yeah, I, I just wanna, you know, make sure that those cares dollars that they're hoarding that will likely be drawn back. To the Federal Treasury because no one's spending them are actually being expensed, but we also have to do our end of making sure. They understand publicly that there is an ask, there is a need because. Um if we just unfortunately wait, they're gonna let that time clock run out and then they're gonna complain about how they don't have resources. So. Just throwing that out there as well. So thank you all.
Sure thing. So I wanted to um before we had, before we moved over to Child Nutrition Services and Jordan Gordon's going to take over, just a couple of other.
Dr. Jones, I'm sorry, Dr. Adele, I just saw Dr. Jones as a question.
Sorry, thank you. I'll be brief. Um first, I appreciate the testing effort. You know, that's not a small thing to take on. Uh for a school district, so I just want to give the, the administration and all the teams involved kudos for that. Uh for sort of picking up some of the slack in our community. Um which is basically what you're doing. So thank you for that. Um and then I have just a couple of points. The first is that I'm concerned that we're not really sure of the significance of the learning loss. Is occurring because those people who at most risk, who's, who have likely. Lost the most, they're simply not being assessed because they have just disengaged. Um so if I take my kids out before your next, uh if I hypothetically, someone were to take their kids out before your next assessment. You probably wouldn't know how much they had lost cuz they just wouldn't participate. So I, I do wonder. Um how we really measure that. Um I think unfortunately, we probably won't know the extent of that really until we go back. And more students are re-engaged, probably sometime next year or whenever. Um and then my last point is that. I just want to remind people, you know, people who are in our district, uh P, employee, staff, whomever, that. When we look at the biggest transmission uh mechanisms of COVID-19. Uh schools remain not one of the primary sources of transmission. Where you see the biggest forms of transmission are people's homes. So if you went to a Halloween party, you know, um any of us, any, you know, if we went to Halloween parties at our house, even just a few friends. As we, we always say, we hear people come in, you know, and say, oh, it was just a few friends. And one of my friends had it, so now I'm quarantined. Um or if you're going to a bar, you know, to hang out and blow off steam after work, I mean, that is a transmission source. Uh if you had, you went to Thanksgiving with your family, like just because they're uh your family members from out of town doesn't mean they can't infect you. So these are the sources when we look at our data. Um from the health side about where it's being transmitted. So of course, if these people are showing up to work. Uh at KCPS and they have these exposures and something, and they get the call to say, hey, do you know this person? Well, they said you were at their house the other day. Uh and guess what? They're positive for COVID-19. You gotta go home. So that, you know, that's what I think about when I see the 22 and 23 and 24 people. Who were sent home. Um it's not because they got sick in the school. It's because um somehow or another, they were in contact with someone uh who was exposed. And so I just. Um my closing point is just. We talk about safety in schools and I know that I've seen some communications from. Staff members who are very concerned about being in the school environment due to transmission. And I, I guess my point is, you know, we need to all keep the same energy. Around our own choices that we make outside of work and outside of school. Because that's where it's really coming from. So we gotta be just as safety conscious. At, you know, when we want to go out or we want to hang out with, with friends and family, like we gotta keep that. Because we think we would all be able to get back much sooner. So um. That's my, that's my TED Talk.
Wow, but Dr. Jones, I, cuz I just have, this was gonna, that was gonna actually go into my closing remarks on this before we move to Jordan Gordon. You, you nailed it. And every bit of data that we, when we do our tracing. We, we, you're right, it's all coming from outside. Um even when we've had people within our school and I, we may have had three cases or so this year that where it's actually been confirmed in our school. It never spread it. From one person inside the school to another person. Now has not happened at all, but you're absolutely right. It's the contact tracing that's killing all of us. Because you have to operate under those precautions. That anybody in contact, if you've been in contact with that person, you were with that person in the teacher lounge. Well, all of a sudden, you got multiple people out and you don't have the bandwidth to support that. But to your point, schools are probably one of the more safer places to actually have people in. If you're not bringing out, it's almost like a bubble, like the NBA bubble. You don't have to. You know, but we can't operate in a bubble. It would be nice because then we could do a lot more too for our, for our kids, but. Um I guess the point I'm making is I agree with you. And so the next phase of all of this is the talk around the vaccine. And there's a lot of fear about the vaccine. And I, I guess I'm gonna say this as a leader of this school system. I went home and told my wife, um I will be one of the first in line to take it. When Moderna comes out because of my research with Moderna and what I think it does. To further help the immune, the immunity system outside of just protecting you from COVID-19. But as a leader. Um I have to be willing to, to do my part to know that my job requires that I have to be out and about. I will not allow for myself to be held hostage like this. Where everything, I only can do everything on the computer screen. I can't get out, I can't talk to kids, I can't meet with people. Um but we know that we're gonna have to figure out. How we are as an organization are going to get back in place because. The, the herd, I think it's called, what is it called? The herd?
Herd immunity.
Herd immunity, you have to at least, you gotta at least have 70% of people. You know, to have taken the, the vaccine and, and able to protect against the virus spreading. In order for the herd immunity to even take effect. And so we gotta, and we know we gotta get back, we gotta get these kids back in. We. We don't want to be a part of committing educational malpractice. And hopefully, we, you know, we have several months here before we think will, it'll be available for us. Everything that I'm hearing from the doctors and also from Desi. Is that we are kind of considered essential. At least with Desi, we would be part of Phase 1B. But even meeting with all of the doctors yesterday, they did say frontline workers and then educators. And it's bigger than just teachers. We got 2,500 employees. So we have to figure out, scale-wise, how do we get this done? You know, for the whole organization because every, every entity. Within the different divisions in our district, they're all important. They are all important to us running this district as a whole. So, you know, we, it, it, it has to be bigger than just teachers getting it. Cuz we gotta have everybody else that compliment the teachers and support them and being able to do their work in the classroom. So those are the things that we are. Um in conversation on right now a, as a part of the Commissioner's Advisory Council. And we'll keep you all up to date as I continue to get more information in on that topic.
Um. Dr. Adele, before you move to the next topic, I think Ms. Wolfsee has a question she wants to ask.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Adele, uh earlier, Dr. Shepherd had spoken about. I believe we have heard from Commissioner Van Devene about spring. Um there will be MAP testing, there will be EOC. Am I correct in, in what I heard her say?
You're correct. At this point, that, that was the decision at the State Board meeting. Um and I think the concern is, is that they, the data's. I mean, is data, the concern you're gonna have with that data is the reliability of it. It goes back to what Dr. Jones said. Right? The reliability of it. How do you know what, where the kids really did that well? How did you know whether kids performed that poorly?
Right.
Given the conditions that they're having to take these assessments in. And I think our big concern, Ms. Wolfsee, is if we're not able to come back. Then how are we gonna test these kids, right? You're gonna, you, you, it's gonna be hard to bring them back. Just to say you're coming in to take MAP assessment and then of course exams.
Well, that's my, kind of gonna be my question, which is, I have concerns. About, and we've talked about this many times as we've talked about returning to school. How important, and I'm with you, I have two, two children at home that really need to be in school. But I have heard recently from a couple of parents and a couple of teachers just in the last week. Around the concerns about stability and consistency if they are to go. Back into the spring and the impact changing your routines. For students when you go from being virtual to maybe being hybrid in the school and whether or not that will impact. Spring testing. I'm not expecting any answers. All I'm asking is that. Please, as you begin to continue to update us, I'd like to hear more about how we think that process might play out. Um I would hope that Desi, even though that they may want to continue with testing. May not have it have as penalizing impact as it might have if it was used um in IMSIP or whatnot. So. That would be my hope. I don't know that that will be the case. I'm more concerned about how KCPS will manage. That transition so that it has the least negative effect on our students and our teachers.
So. And, and I'm sorry, go ahead, Dr. Adele and then Mr. Barka will.
Yeah, I mean, my understanding is, you're absolutely right. The testing is not going to count towards um IMSIP 5. It's, it's really more for the state. To try to make a determination on where, where we are as a state. I would assume that they would probably want to utilize the data to try to figure out. How do we reconfigure priority standards? What, what is it that we need to focus on? So I almost feel like it's data. To give them some indication of, you know, where the state actually landed. But to your point, um there is a lot of pushback from superintendents across the state. As you all know, a lot of superintendents are very concerned about this. And so I know the cooperating school district. Uh leadership is planning on meeting with her. There's a letter that's being drafted uh to send to her. And to sit down and talk about, you know, why wouldn't we just look at utilizing some of the local. Um school district assessment models that they have, right? So like for us, it's eye-ready. Um but I think there's still concerns even with that because how do you take care of the kids that need accommodations? That's part of the issue that you run into. You don't get the true picture of what the data is truly telling you. Because not every single kid is being included in that because you can't accommodate for kids who are, who need accommodations at home. You know, that, that's, I mean, you, there are some cases where you can, but a vast majority of them. You can't, you know, because some of them need more time on task and it's just a lot. So we're, we're, there's a lot of concern right now about that that we'll keep you all posted on as we continue to hear more and more.
So I have Mr. Barka and then Ms. Cortez.
I, I was just gonna say, I, I think this is one of the reasons why I would strongly encourage also some federal weighing in. Uh with our federal elected officials here because I, I feel like. There's gonna be more likelihood for a new Department of Education to weigh in on this specific issue than our state. Um and that is just a political scenario that I think is not gonna change unfortunately. Um and wholeheartedly agree that these are definitely things we monitor on both fronts, but. I think if there's an opportunity, whether the next stimulus package or just frankly, Department of Education policy. Uh I think that's, that's where some change will occur that will provide us some protection in this area. So just throwing that out there.
And I don't know if everybody knows this, but you know, every year we have a responsibility. Um to do the NAEP assessment every, every couple of years. And um the National Assessment of Educational Progress, which it gives you your, your, your norm reference. Um representative data on how your kids are performing in grades four and eight. And they have canceled doing that this year because of the concern with reliability.
Ms. Cortez.
So, Dr. Adele, thank you for um all of the detail that we've talked through this evening. Um and I wanted to follow up on two things. One. Related to, you know, the prospect of vaccines and how um. You know, how our teachers and staff will be um eligible or impacted. Um and I just wanna, I think I want to emphasize to our public that. A vaccine is not a, an on-off switch. Um and that it will be imperative that we have the support of students and families, faculty, staff. To maintain our discipline around protective measures. And, you know, it's, it, it really will take the village to make sure that we keep each other safe. And, and effectively um give our chance, our kids a chance at, at um. In-person teaching and learning um, in the second semester and into the summer. Which leads to my second, and this is kind of similar to, I think, um. Something that, that Ms. Willsey noted, not, not the same point, but the notion of something we, that I'd like to make sure we hear about as we. As we navigate the decision-making uh, challenges moving into the second semester. And that is. Um, kind of. Helping us be aware and, 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 and parents and, and the whole, all of our constituents. Be aware of how we're. Both figuring out the new rhythm for our kids in a hybrid universe. But also using the tools and, and skills that we have. To effectively evaluate each student's learning progress. To think about how we get them further along the track toward grade proficiency. Um, as we move through the second semester and the summer and into uh, the fall of, of 21. Because how we, you know, keep, that's one of those things, I think, as a, as a board member. I'd really ask be integrated into the discussions at a point where. We're beyond the, are we going back question? And now we're into, how do we make the most of it question? So I would just ask that.
That's fair.
Thank you, Dr. Bedell. This is, you can see it's an important discussion, it's of high concern and um. And I appreciate the district's deliberation on models and protocols that we might undertake. That would at some point allow for appropriate and very safe. But, you know, that balance is Dr. Jones is pointing to us of um, safety. But also balancing with high, the needs of our students, so thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So now we want to give you all an update. This is the last piece of uh, my, my presentation on Child Nutrition Services. And um. Jordan Gordon does a wonderful job of uh, speaking and presenting to you all what's happening within his division. And so if we can move the uh, slide deck over to uh, to this part. Um, Jordan, we have a lot of concerns right now as we, we think about our human capital. With food services and, and, and Jordan's going to update you all on where we are and what we think we're going to have to do moving forward. So Jordan Gordon.
Thank you, Dr. Bedell. Good evening, Board Chair, Board Members, Cabinet Members, as well as the KCPS community as a whole. My name is Jordan Gordon, Director of Child Nutrition Services. And I'm excited to share with everyone the progress, the challenges and our future plans around. Food service and food distribution to ensure that our families maintain a high level of service throughout this pandemic. And oh. Hey, Dr. Bedell, may I ask that we, I think we have the, there we go, next slide, thank you. Under our current service model, KCPS has served more than 475,000 meals since the start of school year. In con, in contributing, one contributing factor is our KCPS food hotline. That food hotline was established so that we can maintain direct contact with our families. Who may either need to request additional food resources. Or express concerns or impediments to our existing operations. On a national survey, it was recently discovered that school districts operating under a full remote status. Under CEP, which is the Community Eligibility Program. Um, which enables us to serve food at no cost to our students. On a, under that same survey, we, we really realized that the. The national rate for traditional participation is about 20%. And what that means is that under, when you compare what's. School districts are able to feed and serve under normal circumstances using our benchmark participation. KCPS has more than doubled that by achieving over 45%. Next slide, please. How do we do this? Well, it's a culmination of a couple of things. We have a very, very committed and dedicated food service staff who have been with us since March. Uh, navigating the challenges and the, the hurdles that we've had to embark on. To ensure that our families have access to continued service throughout this remote phase. Our scaled approach allows us to reach our families in a, a variety of ways. Our leading model reaches families at 75% through our partnership with our Transportation Department. Wherein we're able to support our families directly in their home communities across 180 bus stops. Our second model reaches families at 23%. And that is a really, really significant portion for us. That Cafe to Home is where we deliver meals directly to families who are our most vulnerable. Families who have high risk and/or physical limitations. Our last model is around Cafe meals to childcare centers and community partners. Which makes up about one and a half percent of our service model. The remaining balances really encompass between our early, early head start program. Next slide, please. Of our community partners, we're, we have expanded beyond just our, our KCPS boundaries. In terms of students exclusively. We are able to support and deliver meals on a daily basis to several community partners listed here. That exclusively support KCPS students by providing a structured and safe environment for them to learn. In addition to that, we've also received several requests for services from other childcare centers. Who are also supporting our, our families of essential workers who parents have to go to work. And needs food support in those childcare centers. Through our legislative waiver, we're able to service all students between the age of zero to 18. Next slide, please. So despite all of our, our reaches and our ability to, to um, really stretch ourselves. To reach all of our families as best we can. KCPS child nutrition is no different than any other child nutrition program across the country. We're faced with tremendous challenges around our financial revenues. Seeing tremendous losses with kids operating under a remote learning environment. If you look at the top left of your screen, you're going to see our pre-COVID cost per meal. Which is about $2 per plate. Under our current cost per meal is about $3.30 per plate, which nets a 65% increase. As we look at revenues, same time period for last year. Our total revenues in Child Nutrition Services totaled $5.2 million. Current year-to-date revenue. In 2020 is only at $1.5 million, a 70% net decrease. Our year-to-date revenue loss is sitting right at $3.7 million. So when we look at that revenue loss, immediately we began to explore as a leadership team. What strategies and what provisions can we put in place to ensure that? That loss does not become the ultimate anchor at the end of our fiscal year. Next slide, please. So what you have before you is our year-to-date budget savings. Our repairs and maintenance, year-to-date in comparison to the same time last period. Last year, we were able to have a net savings of nearly $57,000. That savings is, is largely responsible due to our partnership with our maintenance facilities. Who have taken on a heavy lift of helping us navigate and ensure that our equipment is working in proper order. The next three items are emboldened as they represent our two largest expenses. Uh, under the food service program, which are food and labor. Commodities processing, which nets us a savings of nearly $143,000. In the commodities category, that's where we see our nearly $600,000 annual donation of USDA food items. From the federal government. Under that concept, the food itself is free. However, we pay for the, the food processing for service. Our next item is going to be labor. Labor, thankfully, due to a proactive conversation exchange with Dr. Collier and the HR staffing team. We made early decisions back in July, not to fill 100% of all of our vacancies. But to rather show prudence and wait until the positions were actually needed at that time of service. That early judgment has netted a $402,000 in savings. The next item is going to be our food. Oh, our food, our food items. Our food is our largest year-to-date net savings at nearly $973,000. The comparison I want to draw here is to our net um, cost per meal on the previous slide. Where, where I just stated that we had a net 65 increase, 65% increase in food costs. The, the parallel is largely due to us really, really making thoughtful and intentional decisions about the products that we source. Understanding the Consumer Price Index, which sets the market on the cost of foods, cost of goods sold nationally. Seeing spikes in produce, 4% spikes in vegetables, 20% spikes, spikes in overall meat cost. Across the country during this pandemic. We were able to quickly work with our prime food vendor, US Foods. As well as um, have heavy and thoughtful conversations with our dietitians. To ensure that we're sourcing and selecting products that are cost-effective and advantageous for our overall financial program. The last item on here is going to be other purchase services. So out of the other purchase services category. We exclusively looked at services that we would normally need to pay for, expand and cover. When students would ordinarily be in person. This, again, being proactive back in July, enabled us to save nearly. $460,000 in what would have been contracted services. Our total year-to-date net savings is just over $2 million. At $2 million, we feel very confident and comfortable sharing with you. Um, will certainly go to offset that previous $3.7 million. As we look to the next, the next phase, we want to talk about what's next. So as we go forward to continue serving for the remaining of, of the academic year. But more specifically, while we are still under the full remote. We're met with significant challenges. One challenge being our human capital. Staffing, staffing poses a huge challenge. Our number one priority is to ensure that we institute and deploy models. That, that really center and focus around keeping our workers safe. As the community spread is at its highest, we're putting our employees on the bus to deliver those, those meals. To those very same communities. And being mindful of that. Um, it, it's imperative upon us that we look at different alternative ways to ensure that we're mitigating risks. Not only for our staff, for our families. A couple of contributors to that factor is going to be what we do differently. And how we continue to press ourselves to evolve and change and modify our delivery service for families. We're considering our curbside pickup distribution, our multiple day weekly meal distribution again. And then the largest of these is going to be around our partnerships. Leveraging sustainable partnerships with community organizations such as Harvesters. Over the last four to six weeks, we've been able to have a very healthy and positive dialogue with Harvesters. To design a, a partnership that would allow us to, to leverage the resources that Harvester brings to the table. Around food insecurity and connect them directly to our families from a local level. In addition to that, community organizations like Church of Resurrection, the um, Kaufman Foundation. Have also been tremendous value adds in ensuring that we're able to constantly evolve. With the ever-changing climate cha, uh, changes around COVID. But also more importantly, focusing on keeping our kids safe as well as our staff. Financially, we're also considering alternative funding opportunities. We've already applied for a, a couple of, a couple of grants that we are looking forward to hopefully receiving some positive word on. Before we close out the calendar year, in addition to Missouri CARES Act supplement. So where and when we find accessible revenues, we're just going to add that to reduce our overall revenue deficit. In closing, I'd like to leave with everyone that our child nutrition team has been working diligently. Feversly to ensure that we do everything that we can to reach all of our students. And despite what adversity and challenges have come along with COVID. My team has done a tremendous job and I just want to be able to publicly thank them for all of their contributions and hard work. Throughout this entire uh, school year. Thank you, and at this time, does the board have any questions for me?
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Um, this is um. Incredible thought you've given to this and the work you've done. And we know that your team has stepped up incredibly. It is extraordinary to think about our school district having served nearly. Half a million meals just since the start of the school year. And for the community to remember that our school year didn't start until after Labor Day. So it is a, it's um, yeoman's work and thank you for that. So uh, Board Members, do you have any questions about this, Mr. Hogan?
Yeah, Mr. Gordon, thank you for, for this. Um, you know, the word that comes to mind when I think of. You, your team and what you guys have done this year, it's, it's agility, right? And what more could you ask for, given the uncertainty that you faced this entire pandemic, right? To be able to sort of be nimble, um, to find ways to still go deliver such an important. Um, and meaningful service in any school district, but particularly in our school district. Yeah. Right? Um, and, and to be able to, I, I, I'll bet you most people don't think of child nutrition services as innovators. Um, and people who can be agile and um, and, and just be flexible um, in a time like this. And so uh, kudos to you, your entire team. And I would echo um, you know, Chairman, uh, Chairwoman Mansour's comments around just, I mean, half a million meals. Right? It's such a huge number um, to think about. So please extend your, your, your thanks from, from me to your team. I, I, I love what you guys are doing. Please continue to, to try to be as flexible as you can and, and drive new revenue opportunities into this. So we can um, cover the losses. But above and beyond all of that, you know, keeping it safe um, for our kids. Uh, is such a huge part of what you guys are doing as well. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I'm looking to see if I have any other um, questions at this time. Uh, Mr. Barca.
Yeah, I mean, Nate stole all the good stuff, so obviously just kudos to you and your entire team. I mean, you, you, um, you are doing work that literally saves folks' lives. Um, make sure that families are fed. Um, and that honestly, workers are getting paid when maybe in other districts, they wouldn't be, right? Um, in terms of our food service workers. So um, thank you for the tremendous effort and the ingenuity and innovation that you're deploying here. Um, you are a most certainly a valuable asset to the district. Um, and I just wanted to personally thank you so much for everything that you're doing for us and, and that your team's doing.
Thank you.
Right, thank you very much, Dr. Bedell.
Madam Chair, before we let him go, I, I did, I want to um, also just express um, his leadership has been phenomenal in all of this. And just as uh, many of our other uh, department leaders within the school district. But you know, he's, you, if you complain, I don't hear about it. Um, that's for certain, but, because you know, some people complain and it gets back to me, I'm like, alright. But this, this gentleman, um. We've had to shut down some of our service cafeterias, right? Our staging areas because we don't have enough employees because they're out on quarantine. And yet, they still continue to figure out a way to deliver, even when they're working on fumes. And that's stuff that goes unnoticed, right? I just think the community, there's an appreciation that we have to have. Um, for quality people doing quality work. And what the Food Services Division is doing. Um, when you go and you talk to those cafeteria workers who are out there, willing to go out in the trenches to, to, to step up and go above and beyond. Um, and they are often some of our lowest paid employees. Um, my heart, I don't know what else to say. I just, I'll do everything that I can to continue to advocate, to continue to fight. Um, to continue to do what we can to compensate those folks appropriately. Given what the law allows for us to do. And I won't stop at that and I hope that some of your members are listening and hearing that loud and clear.
Thank you.
Dr. Bedell, real quickly, I want to ask all of my colleagues, quickly unmute your um, computers. So I think we have to clap for this man and that department. Thank you all.
Thank you, Jordan. Alright.
Dr. Bedell, I believe we go to the Policy Monitoring Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, we are ready. Um, this is our presentation to the board. Our update on 1.3, uh, point 3, Service Learning Student, uh, Socie-Emotional Health and Wellbeing. And Dr. Woodley, who is our Executive Director over Student Supports. She is ready to present and um. And I don't know if you have some guests that may be participating, but at this time, we'll pass it over to you. We're ready to go with the show.
All right, thank you so much. Good evening, Board Chair Manzer, Dr. Bedell, and members of the board. It brings me great pleasure to present the great work that's going on in the Division of Student Support Services. On this year, our division expanded to include two additional departments. The Department of Students in Transition and the Department of Restorative Justice. This evening, you will hear from our difference makers who are on the front lines leading this work. Travana Alexander, who is our Behavior Health Manager, and Sarah Evelyn and Reginald Berry, who are our Restorative Justice Coordinators. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Alexander, who will begin our presentation on the Board Policy 1.3 Monitoring this evening. All right, if we could go to the next slide, please. And then one more for me. Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Bedell, and members of the board. This evening, I'll be presenting what our team of licensed social worker and professional counselors are doing within our district to increase the number of students who receive quality socio-emotional supports and services, our efforts in implementing trauma-informed strategies, and how we're supporting our educators and staff through this process. Next. So as Dr. Woodley mentioned previously, we've been able, through the award of the Boca Grant in October of 2019, we've been able to expand our team from six clinicians to 19 clinicians. This expansion has allowed us to increase, decrease our schools, our clinician to school ratio from two to one and one to one for our most supported schools. That's allowed us to serve more students. Additionally, our community-based partnerships with organizations such as Matti Rhodes has also helped us to increase the number of students that we support and serve. Next. So here you have just a visual of the interventions across four academic years. And as you can see, we're serving, providing more interventions. As of current, we've already provided more than half of the interventions that we provided for the entire school year last year. Also, the data shows that we have provided more services to families this year in addition to the work that we're doing with students individually. Next. Another way that we've been able to ensure quality service with our students is through the implementation of Relay Schools, an online safety management system that's allowing us to reach students who present with a risk of harm to themselves or others. When a student uses a district-issue device that alerts us whenever there's a worry and clinicians engage, conduct the safety assessment, safety planning, and provide wraparound services as necessary. While November's data was unavailable, as we look at the first two months of this academic year, we can, we had over 200 safety alerts, with more safety alerts coming in October. And in addition to that, the number of those alerts that were identified where there was actual risk to harm a self increased as well in October. So we'll be keeping our eye on November's data. Next. So COVID-19 definitely impacted the way we support our students and families. But we remained committed to make sure our students and families had access to quality services. So here's just some of the things that we implemented to maintain that connection with with those that we serve. Most notably, the implementation of Theraling, the HIPAA-compliant telehealth platform that allows us to provide supports and services through video technology, as well as the expansion of clinician hours, which included evening hours to ensure that students and families were able to contact clinicians beyond school hours. Next. Okay, next, I'm going to be going into some of our behavior models that really support and address socio-emotional barriers to learning. Next. So in December of 2019, we adopted the Missouri Model for Trauma-Informed Schools. This model has a theory of change that starts with changes in knowledge regarding trauma that leads to practice changes and ultimately systemic changes within our school districts. This model has 12 indicators that really guides our work to transform us into a model trauma-informed school district. Next slide. So here's an example of one of the indicators in the framework. This is indicator number nine. And as you can see, it gives a a clear description of what schools look like along the spectrum of trauma, from a stage zero, pre-trauma aware, to stage four of trauma-informed. So there's no question about what does that look like in practice, or how do we know when we're there? So this is really guiding our work. We've already begun our initial trauma implementation meetings with each individual school, their leadership, and their trauma implementation teams to get initial ratings where schools stand and to discuss what's been working well to get them at that stage and what needs to happen to get them to the next stage. So if you're at a stage one, great job. What are you doing? Keep that in place. Let's examine what needs to happen to get you a stage two in each of the indicators. Next. Something else we've implemented this year, which is different from what we've done in previous years, is we've moved from a solely intervention model to a preventative model. So we're looking at school district-wide data across three data sets, attendance, socio-emotional support behavior, and academic performance for early identification of students who may benefit from socio-emotional support services. So we're identifying those students early versus them having a dysregulation or disruption, and then interventions are employed. The goal here is to provide preventative services whenever possible. Next. So now we'll go ahead and take a look into how we provide opportunities for training regarding our staff and educators, as well as how we define our trauma-sensitive initiatives. Next slide. So we have a strategic plan over four years to transform Kansas City Public Schools into a model trauma-informed school district. Our Year One aligns with a theory of change with trauma awareness, providing education to students, staff, community members about trauma, its impact, and beginning the thought processes of how to implement those strategies within our school districts. Next. Here is just a really brief timeline of what we've initiated to start that trauma-awareness journey, beginning in 2019 with the adoption of the framework. Our trauma kickoff in February of 2020, where we brought 60 KCPS staff to the Trauma Network Conference in Atlanta to really kick off this work. And again, our partnerships with Alive &amp; Well Communities and the Center for Conflict Resolution is really helping us with our trauma trainings and to get this training across to all of our staff and employees within a district. Next. Okay, so on our journey to trauma awareness, we have about 40% of our staff that have been trained currently. What's helped us get to 40% is embedding trauma training, as well as implicit biases trainers that's done through our Equity Department, within our new higher orientation process, as well as building trauma teams in schools. So we have individuals at each school site that's leading those ongoing training initiatives through professional development opportunities. I will say that this work that we're doing has been recognized by the Center of Conflict Resolution in their in their newsletters to the organization, as well as Alive &amp; Well just recently partnered with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to provide trauma-sensitive initiatives throughout the schools throughout the state. And they're using Kansas City Public Schools Implementation Plan to lead those efforts. Next. And last but certainly, certainly not least, we are also here to support our educators and staff. As highlighted recently in this due-its recognition for the terrific teammate, we are here to support our educators and our staff in this process. Considering the impacts of COVID-19, new teaching modalities, and other social stressors, it's very, very important that we are communicating the importance of self-care and self-regulation to keep ourselves healthy and to be great educators for for the students and our scholars within the district. We also created a confidential hotline where we can engage and support our educators and staff before linking them to ongoing services throughout EAP program and other programs that are offered. Next. So that'll conclude the Behavioral Health Presentation this evening. And I am going to hand it over to Ms. Evelyn and Mr. Berry to discuss our restorative justice initiatives.
Thank you, Travana, and good evening, evening, everyone. Thanks for being with us today. I'm Reginald Berry, the co-senior restorative justice coordinator for KCPS.
Which makes me Sarah Evelyn, the other co-senior restorative justice coordinator for KCPS.
Quick shout out, what you see here is our ambassadors. We'll speak about them a little later, but just want to see our beautiful people there in that picture. Next slide, please. Before we start, I want to start by investing you in our mission and our vision. We believe that all students deserve to enter a school where dignity is valued and upheld. Our mission is to expand this mindset to each one of our schools in KCPS. Excellent.
So a lot of restorative justice is the narrative, the story, the context in which it happened. So we want to give you a little background about who we are and how we came to this work. What's unique about us is we were not a program brought into the district. We were born into the district as KCPS teachers who had an idea and started to pursue it a few years ago. In the 2016, 2017 school year, our history is so long, we can't fit it all on one slide. If you guys remember, Southwest and Southeast High School merged. And in that school year, 48th graders were grandfathered into the Southeast Building. We knew as educators that they needed something unique. They needed programming that fit them as middle schoolers. So we started to do advisory lessons twice a week. And by the end of the school year, our eighth graders had 20% higher attendance than the rest of the school and 30% less discipline reports. We knew we were doing something right, but we didn't know what it was called until we started taking trainings with the Center for Conflict Resolution in 2017, 2018. And we started implementing restorative justice in our classrooms.
We got to think, how could we do what we're doing in each one of our classrooms? And so we decided to create our restorative justice initiative as Southeast Program with the support of Jessica Bassett, our principal, which allowed, so allowed me to take a part-time position as the co-coordinator in this initiative, while Sarah Evelyn stayed in the classroom to hone in to on our restorative practices with them.
And that first year, even with one part-time coordinator, we started seeing some really awesome results and feedback from students. And so we had a theory that those results would only be bettered if we had two full-time coordinators. Luckily, Kaufman Foundation agreed with that theory. And for the past two years, they've been funding us to serve as restorative justice coordinators at Southeast High School. Because it has it at the same time, we formed a partnership with the Black Community Grant Fund to create the first restorative justice student ambassador program. What's important to note, these are not students that you typically see as leaders in the school building. They are not running assemblies, they are not your student body presidents. These are students most impacted by punitive discipline, either at our school or the schools they came from. One student leader, for example, was kicked out of six high schools before coming to Southeast. She has served as a liaison leader, mediator, mentor for the past year. She has not had any fights at Southeast, and she has maintained an A and B average. We take students that might not be seen as leaders and turn them into leaders in our school. Most notably, recently, they conducted a code of conduct review and created an 18-page code of conduct review with a restorative lens that we're happy to share with any board members, cabinet members, or broader community.
So as our community got wind of what we're doing at Southeast, the question is, how could we replicate this throughout our district? So we thought of our residency program, in which we could bring coordinators in each one of our schools to do the work that we've been doing. So today, what we have, today, we are now at South, Central Middle, and Northeast Middle School. So a big shout out to our our coordinators over there, doing a great job. We're looking forward to seeing the future of those two schools. Next slide, please.
All right, so we have invested you in our story, our vision, our mission, the cute picture of our students. But what does this work mean day to day? Well, we want to note that restorative justice is 80% proactive. So if you look in the top right-hand corner, we provide trainings and curriculum that all staff and students have access to. But there are obviously reactive strategies. And in our space, that takes three main forms, conferences, mediations, and community accountability boards. When you think about conferences in a school setting, you don't think about them as the true long process that we perform. Restorative justice conferences take anywhere from 45 minutes to an hour and a half, really getting to the deep root of the issue. Mediations take place between two people who have conflict and take anywhere from an hour and a half to three hours. We've had mediations between students, students and staff, and staff and staff. But the process we are most proud of building is the community accountability boards. This was born out of a relationship with the District Attorney and the Center for Conflict Resolution. As a response to Missouri's growing punitive response to conflict in schools, we saw an increase in charges, especially felony charges. And we decided that students should not graduate with charges on their names because it limits their options after school. Students who have received charges in the school setting, we give them an option to participate in the community accountability board. This takes multiple people involved in their lives, from coaches, pastors, guardians, grandparents, uncles, aunts, we've seen everyone, and the people that were hurt by their actions into the same room. And they asked the three questions that are so essential to restorative work. What happened? Who was affected? And how can we make it right? And we use that third question to create a template for what that student can do to make it right to their community. A lot of times, we see this is volunteer service in the space that they harmed. This is mentorship to younger students who may be going through similar situations. These are presentations for the school about what went wrong and how they wish they would have done it differently. And it, we've had 16 students in the past two years take part in this process and get charges dropped. This is most important for a student who wanted to pursue a future in the military who would not have been eligible with a felony charge on their name. So we are proud of these processes, both our trainings, our curriculum, and our reactive interventions. But we want to know, how is this working and what does it look like? And restorative justice looks at the ratio between suspensions and recidivism rates, for lack of non-criminal justice language. So I'll define both of these. When we're looking at suspensions, we're looking at number of students suspended. If Mr. Berry had three suspensions last year, he's only counted once on this list. Recidivism rates, we're looking at students who have five or more discipline reports throughout the school year. So if you look at 2017, 2018, this is the year before restorative justice was implemented. We had 172 different students suspended that school year. Of those 172, 107 of them would have been considered repeat offenders. They continued that action, showing that our intervention did not work. You look at the next school year with a part-time coordinator, we have a decrease in number of students suspended and a decrease in our recidivism rate. But most, most notably is last year with full, two full-time coordinators. While we had a small uptick in number of students suspended, the context being we had 19 new staff members, two new administrators, we see a huge drop in recidivism rates. So in the year before implementation, in the short two years since then, we've had a 50% decrease in recidivism rates. Next slide. Thank you, Brian. You might go to the next slide, Brian? If it lets you. Thank you. All right.
That's a do.
Yeah, so if you go one more. Perfect. So we wanted to make sure these results we were getting were backed up by student and staff surveys. So I'll go through this very quickly. Before we implemented restorative justice, we asked students, do you feel like you can solve problems that come up with other students in the school? Before implementation, we only had about 50% of students truly feeling like they can solve problems. That jumps to 63% by the next year after curriculum modeling by, modeling by teachers and trainings. We also asked students, do you feel like you and your classmates take responsibility for your actions? Before implementation, only 42%. That grows to about 60% within just a year. We also want staff to feel involved in this work. We know as former teachers that it can be really frustrating for people to be doing accountability work for you. So we asked teachers, do you feel confident in your skills to de-escalate negative behavior and reinforce positive behavior? In fall of 2018, with only one restorative justice training, only 60% of our staff truly felt confident to de-escalate negative behavior. After multiple trainings within the year, that jumps to 82%. 82% of our staff really feeling comfortable with the skills of de-escalation. We also want them to feel involved. We also want them to feel involved in these processes. So we asked them, are you given a chance to express yourself and participate in a restitution process? In fall of 2018, only about forty-three percent of staff really felt like they were invited to be a part of this process, and that jumps to closer to seventy-two percent in the year following. So with these deeper, more in-depth processes, we see that both students and staff are increasing their conflict resolution skills, which made us wonder, how do we duplicate this district-wide?
So the question became, what have we done so far that has allowed us to move so quickly? And what do we, what has allowed us to continue this? It came down to trust. It's the relationships that we built with our community, our staff members, our teachers, our students, that has allowed us to get to where we're at. So what we wanted to share now is, what is our growth plan? What does it look like for restorative justice through our district? For years now, Center for Conflict Resolution has had a relationship with the district, providing their services. With the merger of CCR restored, Ms. Evelyn and myself, we are able to provide a more wraparound service for the district. So what I would like to do is kind of highlight, what can we bring to this growth plan? When it comes to student family programming, we have produced a nine lesson curriculum that merges our entire school into what is restorative justice. So our teachers and our students are learning together what it is to build that foundation. We've also created a English curriculum that has been tailored to our state standards. We've used this curriculum with our ninth graders, for our incoming ninth graders, to really give them, merge to what restorative practices to build that community within. We talk about our services. In the past few years, we've had part-time restorative justice coordinators through the restorative Center for Conflict Resolution. What we do is strive to put full-time coordinators in each one of our schools, our residency program, which we're going to talk in a little more detail a little later. As it comes to training, KCPS has made huge strides to ensure that we become trauma-sensitive schools, as Shabana was speaking of, and also just getting those, understanding the basic principles of restorative practices. We want to dig a little deeper. With all schools that want to take it to the level, we started off with the restorative justice survey, ready-to-do survey, so we could begin to tailor their training and support them year-round to get them where they need to be. In addition to that, and almost most importantly, we want to service the ones that are on the front lines of this work, which is our teachers. Our teachers are the ones that have the face-to-face contact with all of our students throughout the day. And so we want to make sure that we're giving them the coaching and immediate feedback to ensure that they are doing what they do best within servicing our students. Ms. Evelyn, next slide, please.
All right. So Barry has been teasing this restorative justice coordinator residency program for a few slides. So I'll give you the full breadth of what that looks like. As we travel to restorative justice national conferences and talk to people who have been doing this work from five, ten, fifteen years, from Denver to Oakland, we ask them what works and what doesn't work. And time and time again, we hear that a top-down approach does not work with restorative justice. Restorative justice by nature is a voluntary process. So mandating it receives a lot of pushback. KCPS has a unique opportunity to support this bottom-up approach that we have grown. We allow people who are already invested in the school, to be eligible to be a resident, you have to work at the school for at least two years. Resident, we take you through a very rigorous process that includes fifty hours of training at the Center for Conflict Resolution, a hundred and twenty observation hours at Southeast High School, four professional developments, fourteen research journal entries, four professional developments, and an implementation plan that you're responsible for creating, and that is checked by the Southeast staff. Once you're a graduate, though, we do not leave you in the dust once you take over your own school. You receive ten weeks of weekly observation and feedback. You continue to go to monthly professional development, and you submit an end-of-the-year results based on your implementation plan. All in all, we believe this will help us continue to grow restorative justice work with fidelity throughout the district. We are really excited about our early success and the expansion of restorative justice to Northeast Middle School and Central Middle School.
That we plan on expanding throughout, and we're looking forward to expand our services. We appreciate, want to first appreciate the grant support that we've been getting us to where we're at so far, the H&R Block, that is KCPS Foundation, Kaufman. But as our funding cycle comes to an end, we are looking forward for future funding opportunities to continue our work here at KCPS. Thank you, guys. And if you have any questions, we're open.
Thank you so much to all of you. Dr. Bedell, do you have any comments before we open for questions?
No, I'm just appreciative of the data. They've been able to kind of show us the impact that this program is having and just the innovative approach to trying to address some of the, some of the systemic issues we have, right? And how we see how our kids show up and how punitive we can be. And I think this board has been very clear with us around, you know, looking at the handbook and, and taking a deeper look at unpacking it so that we can eliminate, you know, some of the, the language in there that, that opens up for subjectivity and implicit biases, or even being written in a very oppressive nature. And I think some of what I'm hearing from our former teachers is I think you probably have experienced some of these practices, you know, during your time being in the classroom and seeing peers and people like that. And, and we don't want to throw our kids under the bus. We don't want to write them off due to factors that truly are beyond their, their control in terms of how we see them show up. So I'm, I'm just happy to see the progress we're making, you know, in this area. And we have a long way to go, a long way to go. But this is a, this is a start.
Right. Well, we've got a couple of questions so far, and I've got three people. So Mr. Hogan, then Dr. Jones, and Mr. Wasserstrom.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Madam Chair. Reggie, Sarah, I remember visiting Southeast and sort of along with, with Chairman Anser last year, and just walking away going, wow. Why, why can't we just go do this across every single school, right? And here you are tonight saying, well, yeah, it kind of doesn't work that way. You can't do this tops-down approach, which is fair, right? And so one thing I might recommend is the influencer model. There's a bunch of books on it. But it, it's sort of an organizational change management model that allows you to understand how to influence people. And so it's something that you might just purely, I mean, it's not something you probably want to read right before bed, but otherwise, there's a lot of really good information around how to sort of move change management through an organization that might be helpful. But I, I love this stuff. I think I really do want to see it across every single school because it's so valuable. And the work that you're doing just speaks to our ability to recognize that every single kid walks in those doors with a bunch of baggage. And I love it when Dr. Bedell says, you know, and then we expect them to be model students. And this allows them to have the forgiveness and the understanding that's needed for them to sort of improve in, in the ways in which they need to from an emotional intelligence perspective, to be able to interact in a healthy and a productive way with each other. So thank you for the work you're doing and looking forward to seeing it spread across the district.
Dr. Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Sarah and Reggie. I also was impressed by the tour and your presentation tonight. I guess my, excuse me, my challenge would be that I understand that, you know, you can't just go in and flip a switch and increase uptake of any kind of new concept or strategy. But, you know, one thing I do think about is, you know, that work, that kind of idea of sort of slowly influencing. I know that that is something you can kind of afford to do when it's kind of a, it has different impacts. When we're talking about students who've been suspended or whatever, and they're coming back into a school and needing to be reintegrated off of long-term suspensions or what have you, or being put back into a situation with a teacher that they might have had bad words with. Like, I think that this becomes very important. And so one of the things that I was thinking about is, is there sort of a shortcut for some of these? So until you can influence or have the funding to spread across the schools, is there any way to advance the path toward making the restorative justice practice training at least mandatory for, for teachers? It sounds like it's incorporating your new employee orientation. And I'm sorry, this question was for Dr. Woodley and her team, you know, mostly. So because I, I think that the, the slow sort of steady progress is, is progress. It really is. But I think about how the ramifications to the students who don't get the services, they are just so big and they're very steep. And so it's, I know it's realistic, but it's hard for me to hear like, okay, it's going to take a long time. So just, you know, hoping that we can continue to figure out how to incorporate that in a on a short term as well as the long term. And again, thank you for the work that you all are doing.
Thank you so much, Dr. Jones, for, for that comment. And we are definitely working toward trying to accelerate the timeline of get, making sure that all of our staffs are trained. So as Ms. Alexander kind of spoke to, we have done one-on-one meetings with all of our principals in our schools to kind of do that baseline assessment to where everybody is and develop a plan with each one of those principals, how to get a hundred percent of their staffs trained. So we're excited. We're getting some momentum going. So far, we have about four of our thirty-five buildings that have a hundred percent of their teachers have been trained this year in the restorative practices and the discipline that restores model. So we are definitely on the, on the track to making sure that a hundred percent of our teachers are trained in our school district. Not only the new teachers coming in, but our current staff as well.
Thank you, Dr. Woodley. Mr. Wasserstrom.
Yeah. Well, I found the discussion very, very exciting. I've heard the catchphrase restorative justice for several years, but I have to admit that I really didn't know very much about the substance of what's behind the label or phrase restorative justice. So your presentation has been very helpful. Even though you caution that this is not a top-down process, it still leaves me with a lingering question. If it's so good, then however you implement it, it's something that would be positive to implement across the board. If not top-down, then just let at a local level, each principal say, hey, gang, we're going to, in our own way, have restorative justice. But from a position of being on a, a board of directors, you know, I can understand the qualitative side, that if you save one soul, you've saved the world. It's hard to put a price tag on the value of taking somebody and steering them away from a bankrupt life of crime and forming them into a creative person. At the same time, to implement a program of restorative justice costs money. Somebody has to come up with the money for staff positions, for a coordinator, for whatever, for overtime. If people are meeting after class, whatever's involved, you put a price tag on the operation. And to balance off the issue of staff cost and whatever other expenses, there's the issue of trying to evaluate what kind of savings you have, savings in terms of lost time of screwing around with people that interrupt classes so you can't educate the rest of the class while people are acting out, or whatever other types of costs are involved. Have you all gone through any studies? Or have you had any experiences that allow you to evaluate in an economic sense the cost and benefit of restorative justice?
So Mr. Wasserstrom, you had a couple of comments that you made that I wanted to kind of respond to. One, that we have done, you know, multiple, a lot of actual research on this, on this model to determine the effectiveness and the cost-benefit analysis of the model. The other piece is about the, the ask about this data. So Mr. Berry and Ms. Evelyn, we have a plan to roll this work out across the school district. I mean, we've already having conversations about school readiness, looking at which schools are ready to kind of take on this work and how to expand this work. But of course, and you guys know that I am undergoing the research now on about the, you know, different policy changes that we want to make. So one of the ask when we bring the budget will be, how do we implement restorative practices and expand the work? And so, so that's a question that we're going to be coming to the board with about how do we implement this work that we know is effective across the school district and, and develop a systematic way of doing so, but with a budget that can support the work. Because like Mr. Berry and Mr. Evelyn talked about, their budget runs out this year of the grant funding that we have received for the program. So in order to sustain the program next year, we've got to be able to kind of come up with the financial means to be able to make this happen.
It sounds like it's very worthwhile.
Thank you so much. And I've got Mr. Barca wants to ask a question.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think the questions, Dr. Woodley just answered the timeframe, and it sounds like it's going to be proposed in this next upcoming budget. So I, the only thing I guess I would add is to make sure Reggie and Sarah don't get stolen away from us from some other district because they're tremendous assets to us here at KCPS and to our kids and families. So kudos to the both of you for this tremendous presentation. And you can count on me to be a supporter of that funding line item there, so.
Dr. Bedell, I have a, a question, and I don't know if it's to you or Dr. Woodley, may not be able to be answered right now. But I, I'm trying to think about if in some of the latest allocations of funding that, you know, resources made by the, the governor and the legislature, was there, were there additional funds within that for social emotional supports that we might be able to tap into? And you don't have to answer that question at this moment. And I think my second question, I think you would probably be able to answer, are we using some of our Department of Justice grant money to support some of this work, or is that being directed in, in another area?
You're talking about the?
The DOJ grant, the multi-year DOJ grant. I didn't know if any of that money was also.
The VOKA grant she's talking about, Dr. Woodley.
Oh, VOKA, okay.
No, I think this was already in place before we ever wrote that grant.
Yeah. Okay. So I guess we're all charged with looking for some additional philanthropic or state money. So, all right, thank you. This has been very helpful. Are there any additional questions from, from anyone before we move to the next item? Thank you, Dr. Oh, Ms. Wolfsey, go ahead.
I just want to make sure they saw all of us were very interested in the code of conduct review that the students did.
Yes. Well, I'm so excited. It's been a powerful experience to have the students engaged in this work. And the Southeast, as well as the District Advisory Student Council, they've really were really engaged in breaking down their feelings about the code and giving us their advice. And even they're working on creating a student bill of rights to go into the code of conduct. So we would love to share that information with you to kind of let you know where we are in the process. But it's some, some fascinating things that's going on right now with the work that we're able to do in that area.
Thank you, Dr. Woodley. We'll add it to our follow-up list. Appreciate it. Thank you, Dr. Bedell. I believe we now go to business items, regular business items.
All right. Let me just get to it on my chart. Okay. So the first item that we have, the annual audit accepted shouldn't be up here, and that is not what I'm seeing on my sheet. So unbelievable. It happened on the sixteenth.
Right, correct.
Okay. So let's go over to the second item, which is Nows Home for Children. This is the contract that the administration has requested approval for, the twenty-twenty-one renew of this contract, not to exceed a total of three hundred thirty-nine thousand seven hundred dollars. These funds are available in our special education operating budget.
Are there any questions on this business item? Hearing none, it would be in order to receive a motion to approve the recommendation to. Hearing none, it would be in order to receive, um, a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, uh, to approve the service agreement with Niles Home for Children. Second. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, this will be a roll call vote. The secretary will call the roll.
Ms. Manzer?
Yes.
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wasserstrom?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Yes.
Thank you. There is a majority in favor and the service agreement is approved. Next item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Second item that the administration is requesting approval on is the EMCOR Services Fagan. It's a contract in the amount of one million forty-two thousand nine hundred seventy dollars. This is the contract to perform phase-one renovations at Woodland, at the Woodland School for Development of a Newcomer Center. Um, the EMCOR's bid included twenty-eight percent WBE participation, and funds are available in the approved capital projects budget.
Are there any questions on this item before we proceed? Hearing none, it would be in order to receive a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent for phase-one renovations at Woodland Elementary School in the amount of one million forty-two thousand nine hundred and seventy to EMCOR Services Fagan.
Uh-huh. Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, this will be a roll call vote. The secretary will please call the roll.
Ms. Manzer?
Yes.
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wasserstrom?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Yes.
Thank you. There is a majority in favor, and the, uh, motion to support EMCOR Services Fagan is approved.
Madam Chair, can I just, can I make a quick comment on this one?
Yes.
It's been, um, this has been one of the things that, when I first got here in two thousand sixteen, I felt that there was a need for us to explore looking at a newcomer center, given the fact that we have well over fifty languages that we serve. We have a lot of, um, immigrants that move into our community. And, you know, to have the largest ELL population in the state and to not necessarily have all of our resources concentrated in one area where we can maximize what we can do to provide service to these kids and also help them have some level of a transitioning to be able to then assimilate into the new school setting. So, uh, to be able to get started with this phase-one renovations to, to start this off, it's going to be huge for us. And we do believe with, um, the new president-elect, that the, um, ELL population will continue to increase. And so I just think it's great that we're able to do this. Uh, and so I want to, I just want to thank you all for approving us to get started on this project.
Thank you, Dr. Bedell. It is exciting, and, um, I think it's a point of pride for our district that we, um, are that kind of a welcoming place for, uh, children and families who come to us from all parts of the globe. And, uh, it is, it's a, it's a thrilling new development. So, um, with, uh, oh, Mr. Abarka, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to make one, one note, and Linda, please correct me if I'm wrong. This was a project that we plan to include, uh, with the increase in property taxes. Am I correct on that one? So this is a, a commitment that we are executing from the dollars that we were, um, able to, uh, receive with that increase.
That's correct.
That is, yes.
All right. Thank you. Um, so with no further, uh, additional questions or discussion, uh, or we've already moved on to that, where I'm going to go now to consent items. So it would now be in order to receive a motion to approve our list of consent items, items one through seventeen. For this evening, I would accept a motion, please.
Don't move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the consent items listed under the consent agenda? Hearing none, this will be a roll call vote. The secretary will please call the roll.
Ms. Manzer?
Yes.
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wasserstrom?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes. Um, with that, this evening's, uh, business meeting is adjourned. The Board of Directors will reconvene again on December sixteenth for final discuss, discussion and acceptance of the audit. And then, uh, we will see everyone again on January thirteenth in the new year. So thank you to everyone who joined us tonight. Uh, the holiday season is beginning this week for many people. Um, we wish everyone well and, um, have a very safe and healthy holiday.
Bye, guys.
All right. Happy holidays, everybody. All right.
Thank you.
Take care.